Okay, we're recording now.
Thank you. So it is February 24th and it is 6:00 PM. My name is Mayor Julia Johnson and I am calling to order the Seeger Woolley City Council. If you will stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Janiky. I see she is visiting tonight, watching our council meeting. So welcome, Commissioner Janiky. Let's move into roll call. I will begin with Glenn Allen. I see you. I didn't hear you.
Present, present.
The only reason I ask is so that we have it for the recording. That's all. Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Kinser.
Present.
And Councilman Loy. Thank you. Okay, looking for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
And Mayor, Councilman McGoffin, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Sarah Second.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I'll second.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now moving into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? It's items one through five.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through five.
Thank you.
Councilman Owen, check it.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilman Owen, to approve Council consent agenda, items one through five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to staff reports, and I will start with Fire Chief Klinger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Commissioner Janiky, how are you? Just want to give a quick update. We were finally able to close out our 2018 FEMA grant. We finally got all the items in and we were able to put in for payment on Monday. We requested payment and we were notified on Tuesday that they had received our request and approved it and said checks in the mail. So I don't know how well that would be received from the federal government, but they said checks in the mail. Still no update on Phase Three. I've been trying to track that and follow it. Nothing is coming out yet. As I shared with you, Mayor, I think that we're going to see that Phase Three is going to be tied to vaccines. But I'm just thinking that it will there, but I haven't heard anything for sure. The last we knew earlier today, we were about 100 of the 100,000 as far as where we're at. And I was looking back through some of our old memos just a few months ago when we were at 24.8 and we were hoping to get to the 25. And it was kind of funny how things have changed in the six months. I mean, I'm happy that we're only at 100 of 100,000. About 25,000 vaccines have been brought in Skagit County. I'm not sure if that, and maybe Commissioner Janiky can answer that. If we've been, if that's counting what's going on as far as through the tribes also. I know DeWallis has been giving out quite a few vaccines, but I don't know if they're in that number of that 20, you know, of all Skagit County. But other than that, and then the new FEMA grant that we put in for it, it's now on its way. It's been sent off. So Frank and Chief Carpenter are just waiting to hear. Hopefully they'll get some news before 2021 or ends. But the way these FEMA grants, I told them, don't be surprised if it's into 2022 when you hear it. So that's all I have unless somebody has any questions.
Are there any questions for the Chief? If not.
Comment, may I comment?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, yeah, D20 continues to give vaccines on the average of probably 75 a week right now between first and second vaccine. So we've probably given a total of, oh gosh, I can't even imagine, but probably 400, at least first vaccine at this point.
Wow.
Yeah, and I'm, those are where I'm not sure if those are actually counted in Skagit County Health Department accounts or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, Chief. I don't know. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to give Commissioner Janiky an opportunity to answer if she would so choose.
I don't know the answer to that. I was just going to say Mayor Johnson and I were in the same briefing this morning and didn't think to actually ask that particular question, though. My guess is no, that the tribal allocations, since they come straight from the feds, are not included in the count. Because Jennifer also distinguished that the allocations to certain pharmacies are not in the count that comes straight from the feds and don't go through Department of Health allocation. So my guess is no, but we'll confirm that.
Thank you, Commissioner Janiky. Okay, and moving on.
Mayor.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Kinser, yes?
We are not only giving the vaccines to tribal members, but also to employees and their spouses and immediate family members. So it is reaching out to a far, far wide range of community members.
Well, that's great that they're offering that. Thank you for letting us know. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I'm going to move on to Police Chief Lynn Tucker. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I guess keeping in the COVID vein, we got the last of our folks vaccine vaccinated yesterday, I do believe. About half of our department was down with just for about a day after the vaccine with kind of that Credy illness that people have been experiencing with it, but everybody's bounced back. I got a little bit of it when I got my second vaccine and Ibuprofen knocked mine back. So we're back, we're kind of wrapping all that up and happy to get through that. On our personnel side, we've got Officer McGay Hayes finishing training next week. So we're going to turn him loose on the population of Cedar Woolley in one week. I think his training officer is ready to kick him out of the car and he's ready to jump out of the car. So they're ready to roll. And then about a week and a half after that, we should have two and possibly three more of our newest officers. They all got out of the academy about the same time. One of them, Kira, was a little delayed. She got pretty sick on both COVID vaccines, so had some sick time off. So she was a little bit behind Harry. They should have been finishing up together. So that's going to put four new patrol officers on the street by the 16th or 17th of March. And on the 17th of March, we should be getting Brady out of the academy. He should be graduating from the academy. They've had such a mess of trying to keep them folks in the academy that it's hard to keep up with them. He should have been out of the academy tomorrow, but he's not out until March 17th. Then we've got Max is still in training. He's still got a couple more months. And we've got a new hire that we've offered a job to Seth Bass. He's got an academy date, I believe, April. It's like the first week of April. Dan's got that. So we got him already scheduled. And we're looking at the one more person that we need to hire to replace our two losses at the end of last year. And one of the people that we're looking at already has the police academy under her belt, and I do believe it's a female officer from Bothell. I just got the briefest rundown when I was passing my lieutenant today. So we'll get a little bit more information on that when it firms up and we see what the background looks like. And with all that good news, we've got Officer Kate's is heading for his military deployment. So there's a little bit of bad news. We're losing one officer for a year. So he's taken off for that. And the last thing I've got is if you take a look at our social media, there's a preview. I think this Friday, we're going to have the full video of the eight or 10 of us from the police department, the fire department and district date fire department doing the polar plunge in a wonderfully, whatever the opposite of heated pool was up at Fire Station Two. You know, if we throw an ice in, I do believe it would have warmed it up a little bit. But there's just a little preview of me doing a beautiful swan dive into that water and coming up spluttering. Fortunately, I couldn't say anything because my mouth was full of water and I was frozen. But good time was had by all of us. We really appreciate the fire department putting that together for us. And with that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. We will be swearing in three more officers, I believe, just a month from tonight, will we not?
Yeah, I do believe so.
Good news. All right, thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? All right, Karen, then we'll move on to Director of Building, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So give an update on what the planning commission worked on. They had a meeting last week and had reviewed the electronic reader boards in the central business district. I think they made really good progress. And we're hoping to have something for them to review, some actual code that they can look at. They've given us good ideas, good direction, and we talked about locations. So that's going along nicely, probably still a few months before it comes to council, though. The Planning Commission also held a public, first of two public hearings for some periodic updates to the Shoreline Master Program. We adopted the Shoreline Master Program in 2016, a major revision. So we don't really have a whole lot of major updates to it this year, just some things that ecology is requiring to be updated to meet current regulations. And so that's going along swimmingly. And then I've got two items on tonight's council agenda, so you'll be hearing plenty from me tonight. So I'll leave it at that unless anybody has any specific questions for me now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Coleman? Okay, I do not see any. And I believe that next Wednesday, we have a joint training session or planning session, do we not? Planning Commission and the council will be coming together?
Yes. So next Wednesday at the work session will be a joint city council planning commission work session. It's a, we do these twice a year. It's a good opportunity for the planning commission to get some face time with the city council. And of course, we'll go over some business, too. We'll be talking about the 2021 comprehensive plan update cycle. So if there's any, you know, one of the things I'll be asking the city council about is if there's anything specific in the comprehensive plan, any of the elements there that you felt needed to be reviewed. And this will be an opportunity to look at it again, that the comprehensive plan was also in 2016. We did a major revision and were required to do another major revision in 2025. And we'll be gearing up to do that, probably not until 2022 or 2023. Through the county and Skagit Council of Governments will be doing a regional view of our growth projections and coordinate all of the city urban growth areas, expansions or changes as necessary at that time. So this year, on our 2021 comprehensive plan update cycle, there's not a lot to review. And I'll give you more information about that on Wednesday night. But just to put the feelers out there, if there's anything that the city council is wanting to see done with the comp plan, we'll be talking about that at the work session next week. And so you can think ahead.
All right. Thank you, John. Director of Public Works, Mike Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Commissioner Janiky. Just a few things to update you on. Our American Disabilities Act transition plan is getting close to do a final draft. I should have that on Friday. We'll have that to you for a first read on April the 14th, after we get through the rest of our process and hopefully for final adoption on the 28th. It is due by the end of April, at least to have it in place according to federal rules. Our SR20, SR9 Township project design is moving ahead. I also should see that on Friday and 90% plans. We have secured the temporary construction easements from the Arco station owner. So we're ready to go with certification of that project and should be able to seek obligations of the federal funds in the next two to three weeks and have that in place. We have found out, however, I'm in the process of still confirming, but it looks like the signal poles themselves are four to six months out, which means we'll probably go ahead and bid the project, award it, and then suspend it so that the contractor can submit on the materials for that. And the construction itself isn't likely to take place until the summer of 2022. David is also working on the design work for our Tim-funded Wicker Road overlay project. We're doing some ADA ramp upgrades in association with that at the intersection of Township and State Street, long needed there by the large housing complex. And beyond that, our wastewater treatment plant electrical improvements project, the contractors planning to mobilize on March the 8th and begin that work. It's about a 45-day contract to complete that. And we'll be glad to get that one underway and get it completed in June. BNSF, the undercrossing, we have not received their contract as yet. We've got all the details pretty well worked out with them. It's just a matter of their legal department getting us the document to sign. So I'm hoping you will see that by the first or second meeting in March for your approval. BNSF is moving ahead on their end with the final design. I understand they've ordered the piles as well, kind of at their own risk. But at the end of the day, that should happen in sequence. And they are scheduling to have the work finished for that initial phase of that project by April, I mean, excuse me, by June 30th, which is our date that we have to spend the state funds that we have allocated for the project. Finally, just for any of you who are curious about it, Eastern Avenue, over in front of the Pioneer Market, we do plan to overlay that project as a part of our street work this summer. Nathan is setting up for that. We'll be doing some ADA ramp upgrades in association with that. And if you've been by the new library, Doug will be talking about that. It's getting pretty close. Our crew is, this week is removing the rest of the old BNSF tracks along in there. When we get that done, we're going to grade it out, put some topsoil on it and seed it. And hopefully by early, mid-spring, that'll be green. So that should be a nice addition to the ambiance of the library. And Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
My other thing.
One moment, one moment, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Mark.
Apologize. I meant to mention, we were asked to look at putting a LED flashing stop sign pair at the Jamison and Township intersection. We've looked into that and that's quite affordable. And it looks like a good addition there. Nathan, when we went out and looked at it today, told me he was there when there was a driver that drove through that intersection. So he's very aware of the issues that are happening with speeding and that kind of stuff there. So we are moving ahead with that. Just wanted to let you know that. Sorry for not thinking.
No, thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman Kinser.
Yes, my questions are to Mark. Mark, what are your estimations on when the library will actually be able to open to the public with all the COVID restrictions?
I'm going to defer to Doug on that. He's keeping better track of those things.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Actually, actually, I could answer that. We haven't determined when we're going to open, when the city hall is going to open. Is that what you're asking? I have been in touch with other mayors. We want to be in step together when we do that. And I've also been in touch with Jean Williams at the library because we also want to be in step when we move forward with opening up.
Will it be, will a library open in conjunction to when City Hall opens then?
So I am just keeping Jean informed of what we're doing and that will be her determination. She does have, there's a checklist of things that she will have to complete before she can open up. So I certainly don't want to put any pressure on her to force her to open up before she's supposed to. But I can tell you, she is very excited about having the public come in and see the building. It's beautiful. It's beautiful.
I'm sure it is. And it's exciting. And I understand if we really don't know, if we really don't have any answers yet. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will move on to Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
So we're continuing outfitting of the public safety vehicles with the technology. Working with the staff on the cemetery management software, RFP, and reviewing estimates for Phase 2.1 of the Council Chambers AV upgrade. Working with Sergeant Blunt on the Seeger's security audit, which we do about, I believe it's every three years, and it's pretty intensive. So that'll probably take a week or two. The new leased multi-function copiers from Rico are scheduled to arrive on Tuesday of next week. So we'll get those set up for the users that are connected to those. And workstation upgrades continuing on our replacement schedule. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Chambers? Okay, Karen, then we'll move on to Financial Manager, Jill Scott. Jill, I think you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have much to report tonight. We're just continuing to work on 2020 wrap-up. And Doug will be, Doug will likely be working with Mark on presenting that sometime in the future. There's always a lot to do at the end of the year and the beginning of the year. So we're very busy doing that and supporting the various departments. And of course, the big news is Mark Roberts, the new Finance Director, is set to arrive soon. So we've been working with IT and our different accounts just to make sure that he is set up to have everything that he needs to hit the floor running. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Monday, as I do believe he begins on Monday. But I know that Doug will give us more information on that, so I'm not going to steal his thunder. I'm going to move on to City Attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Good morning or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I don't have a whole lot to add. We are working on some bigger ordinances that you will see in the very near future, including a rewrite of Title VI, which is the animal code. And also, we've got a big franchise coming your way soon with the PSE renewal. So a lot of things going on in the background, but probably nothing of interest to the group this evening.
But we'll be in the future. Thank you. City Supervisor, Doug Merriman.
All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. I've got several things, actually, just to give you quick updates on. When I look at the people, land, and money categories, I'll start off with people. We have a couple of different things we're doing as staff at the city. I'm working on right now is public records training. We've all, council included, the mayor, have been through our public records training, but in working with Nikki, we're seeing that we need some additional in-depth training for staff. And this is in areas on, from the data request comes in all the way until we close that request. So things like what information can we redact or leave in? There's just a lot of different things that we need to update on our policies and get that solidified up. So we're arranging some training and putting together the list of participants. We started working on that today. And we'll be moving that along. That's a risk area. We want to make sure we're on top of and that we're doing everything the way we should be. Along with that, I have talked to the mayor some about leadership training for our managerial staff. It's been quite some time since that's been done. So I've reached out to a couple of training areas to look at what they can do. And it's one of those things for department heads, even those of us that have been around a long time. That area in leadership changes all the time. You get different generations of staff coming through. We all need to be aware. We can always stand for a good brush up on our training. So we're doing that as well. Hand in hand with that, we're going to be doing performance evaluations. This is something the city hasn't done too much in the past. So actually, the mayor and I were going over a draft of some things today as far as how we would approach those and get input from staff. One of the things I've seen over my career is performance evaluations. A lot of times, your boss comes in and gives you the report card and says, "Thank you very much. See you next year." I do things a little bit differently. It should be a little bit more interactive where staff actually gets a chance to self-rate. And I even get in there and say, "What can I do to help you?" And it's more of an interactive process where we look at things on what we're going to accomplish and take a more of an approach that way than the report card approach. And then the last part on that is a personnel policy manual. Nikki, our city attorney, has a draft she's put together. We're starting to work through that. Our current manual was written in 1990 and some things have changed since that time. So we're going to be looking at making those changes toward the manual and working with staff to getting those things updated. A couple of people things, kind of on a sad note or melancholy note. Tony Niskanen, our building inspector, has given notice. He's going to be leaving the city. Tony's been with us quite a while and he's been the face of the city out there with contractors and that. So someday I'll unlock his office and let him out, but I think we're going to try to hang on to him as long as we can. And he's offered to kind of help us out, make that a smooth transition. So we'll be working on that. One kind of note of kudos to give, and that is Mark Freiberger, our Public Works Director. Mark is the guy who's always in the numbers and working the projects and everything. He's also been our face a little bit this last couple of weeks. We've been working with our legislative representatives. The mayor has set up those meetings and that. And in a way, Mark has been our Vanuah. He's, it's his face on the screen talking about the projects and explaining those. And he's done a great job of that. He has a day job as well. So he's been doing a lot of those things and putting in extra time in that. I just wanted to thank Mark for that. He did a great job at representing the city on that. Who else do I have on here? Mark Roberts is our new Finance Director. He's coming up from National City, California. I think literally at this moment, he's probably driving this way. They've been working on getting a place to live, at least a rental for now. And his start date is March 1st. That may be a plus or minus in there, just depending on when he can get settled in. But believe me, we're looking forward to having him onboard. And as Jill said, we have a list of things ready and waiting for him. So it'll be exciting to get him on here and exciting to bring him to city council and you guys can get to know him as well. The library project, if I go to land, the library, I actually signed off on the substantial completion documents. That was on the 17th of February. That's a big step for us. That's when the contractor starts turning over the building to us. We have our final punch list items. We're just steadily working those down. They're mainly in the area of electrical. We have our final punch list items. We're just steadily working those down. They're mainly in the area of electrical. We have a couple of countertops to finish up, so we're getting down to those final things. You know, they say sometimes the last 5% takes 90% of the time. You know, and it, it kind of looks that way. But I think with the substantial completion signed off and we get our punch list signed off, the construction component of the, the library will be essentially done. So we're actually getting to that point and starting to work with Jean now on the moving process. We have a couple of different buildings involved besides the new library. So it'll take a little bit of time yet. We don't have an actual date, as the mayor mentioned, that we're going to be open. But it's getting close. Everybody's getting pretty excited about it. And then finally, on the money side, Jill mentioned it's year-end, so we do have a lot of reports. USDA reports, grant reports, all kinds of things. We're crunching and getting those out. There's a lot of deadlines on those. Jill's been doing a great job at keeping that moving. We did some work this week on our recycle program and solid waste. Councilmember Lloyd actually called in and asked some good questions about recycle. So I'm actually going through the solid waste fund with Leo's help. And we're splitting it out into pieces. So what's our regular garbage pickup? And what does that cost? And is that paying for itself? And we're splitting out recycle as well. And just showing, so we can look at these different functions and make sure our pricing is right. And we kind of know what we're looking at. I know we've had conversations about recycle as a council lately. And so we think this will be good support information for some of those conversations we need to have. So I'm hoping to get that wrapped up here in the next couple of days. And I think for now, that's all I got for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving on to council reports, I'll begin with Councilman Lloyd.
I don't really have much to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen.
Yes, Mayor Julie. Okay, I'm just going to be a grumpy old fart again. Is there really, and this is going to go to Mark, is there really a problem at Township and Jamison? Or is it one or two people's problem? And do we have to reinvent the wheel? You know, Chief Tucker has put that car down with the speed, you know, tell you, tells you the speed and stuff. What can we do? We can't regulate intelligence of drivers. And I don't see it as, I've driven down that and it's not that busy of a road. Okay, I'm off.
Thank you.
Well, we're seeing about 4,000 vehicles a day on Jamison from our counts, so it's actually fairly busy. And I, you know, it's anecdotal, to be sure, Councilmember Allen, but. Nathan has, has observed a recent accident, and I've heard of others. And certainly when this first came to us from Councilmember DeYoung, one of the neighbors in his ward. Had noted that they've served close calls and actual accidents there. So the cost of what we're planning to do is pretty minor, and if it raises the awareness of. Of the drivers a little bit, saves one accident, certainly is well worthwhile, pretty low-cost thing, so. I, I think it makes sense to move ahead with this particular one.
So we, do we do it on Bennett and Sterling and Jennings and every other street there?
No, but I do think that if there are higher volume arterial streets. This is a good thing for us to see how it works, if it improves things at all. And it would be easy to deploy some of those other ones in our normal process of updating stop signs. They're relatively inexpensive and. That's, that's why I'm, I'm certainly good with going ahead with it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Allen, or is that? Is that your?
No more, more, Mayor, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Councilman McGough.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeYoung.
Good evening. Yes, we've had a little bit of wind blowing and we've seen some tree activity happening in the neighborhood to help folks. Mitigate property damage, and so that's, that's going on in the neighborhood and. Am pleased to hear about. The improvement to the stop sign on Jamison and Township. Thank you, Mark, for looking into that. Looking at the engineering component of the three Es to help with traffic, which is engineering, education, and enforcement. So thanks much for that. Personal note, I might be typing a little slower. For a little bit or getting to that mute button a little slower. I had bilateral hand surgery today. And am recovering, so please patience and I indulge your compassion on me getting to a mute button. Thank you.
Gosh, Carl, did not know that. I wish you an expedient recovery, a complete and expedient recovery. Yeah, you're welcome. Moving on to Councilman Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to know.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had a utilities meeting with Mark Freiberger. The committee discussed multifamily sewer general facilities charges. That Mark will be bringing to the council for full. Or full council, and if Mark wants to add to any of that, I'll let him. Otherwise, that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Freiberger?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to add to that a little bit, discussion was not anything relating to what council. Chose not to act on last time, which was to leave the calculation of general facilities charges for sewer on multifamily unchanged. That's not. Altered by what the discussion was tonight. What we did discuss was the timing of collection of the fees. And we talked about that in the, in light of the fact that. The current methodology of collecting them at issuance of building permit. Does place a fairly large burden on the developers cash flow-wise. We're looking at possibly using developer agreements, which are permitted under state law. To look at the timing of those things. It has no effect on the revenue stream of the city to speak of fully. Our, our financial plan would still be fully satisfied by the payment of the full impact fees. It would just change the timing somewhat. Any implementation of that would come to council for your full review. In the form of approval of developer agreements when they come up. And so that was the main part of that discussion. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, thank you. And Councilwoman Kinser.
Hi, good evening. Um, my greatest concern will. Happen down the road here in the meeting, but I would also like to share with the council. Email I received from a constituent, um. And noticed that email did not go out council-wide, so I'm going to read it to you anonymously. And I advise this constituent that it would probably be in their best interest to bring it to the council in a public comment. And involve any people in the neighborhood who also have the same concerns to bring it to the councils, so. I'm going to read this anonymously and hope you all take it into consideration. So here we go. Um. My wife and I recently bought a house near the corner of Rita and West Talcott. Since moving to Sidewall in last August. We have noticed that many drivers use the neighborhood streets of West Nelson and Rita. As a thoroughway from Highway 9 to State Street and vice versa. For residents of these neighborhoods, that makes sense, but too often, many drivers speed down these residential streets. To beat the traffic along the major arterials. My wife and I have noticed this because we have an 18-month-old son. That we take out regularly in the neighborhood and walk along West Nelson and Rita Street. My concern, and why I'm writing you, is that the neighborhood streets are often populated with kids, as they should be, including my own. From high school kids with on skateboards to younger kids riding their bikes or playing with balls and walking along the road. Last summer slash fall, my wife and I witnessed several close calls. As drivers sped through the neighborhoods at greater than 30 miles per hour. And kids almost got hit due to a ball bouncing in the road or while trying to ride their bikes. I see this issue only getting worse as more people, quote, find. These through streets to get out the major roads. Highway 9 and State Street and speed through to beat traffic. I see it getting worse as more families have also moved into the neighborhoods around these streets, whether it be the recently completed Habitat for Humanity Houses. The apartments along Rita or the apartments set to be built just west of Rita Street. More kids will continue to play in and along the roads of this neighborhood. I would appreciate a response with regard, with regard to possibility paying in speed bumps along West Nelson and Rita Street. This would not only discourage cars from cutting through the neighborhood streets. Also keeps kids slash pedestrians safe. As it forces cars to lower their speeds on roads that are not supposed to be the main arterials in Sidewall. Thank you for your timing reading this, and blah blah. Okay, we'll skip the rest of that, but. Um, I have encouraged this resident to bring this to council on their own. As public comment, you know, also encourage any residents in that area to include their comments because. I had a good friend living right on the corner of Rita Street and West Nelson. Spent a lot of time there visiting, and I have seen this traffic problem on my own personally. And I think it is definitely worth addressing. With either the speed car, Chief Tucker, or maybe speed bumps are really a good idea since it is also. Part of the high school traffic area as. The speed bumps were placed on Wally Street. That might also be an appropriate place to play, place speed bumps as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Kinser. I don't know if either Chief Tucker or Mark Freiberger wanted to make a comment. I agree with. Brenda's assessment that it would be nice for the, this woman or gentleman who wrote the letter to come before the council, but also anybody else within the neighborhood. Any thoughts?
I can offer just a little bit there, Mayor. You know, one of the things that we got going on now is we don't have any bodies out. But like I said before, we're going to have four new officers hitting the streets. And one of the things that we want to make sure they're doing is hitting those probably 50 to 60 different spots in town. Some of that spot checking traffic enforcement will discourage some of it, but. It, it's always going to be the biggest complaint. It's always going to be one of the toughest things to, to crack down on. We joked about this for years in City Council about fixing Talcott Street. And you'd hear some people say, we don't want to fix Talcott Street because it's essentially got its own built-in speed bumps. And keeps the traffic slow. So honestly, Mark can speak more to speed bumps. The speed bump on Wally Street to me makes, it's the only one that would make sense. Other through streets, not so much, but that's more of a engineering thing than, than is in my, my wheelhouse. But enforcement, people out and about. You know, doing traffic enforcement, and we are growing and we're, we're suffering growing pains from it. We have traffic problems. Virtually everywhere, and it could very well be one or two people that are causing the problem. And that's, that's a really almost impossible to enforce unless you get lucky and. I can't have an officer set for hours in one spot looking for one car that might come through. There's easy spots you can do traffic all day long, but there's target areas that we can do as well. When school's in session, we hit the area around the schools for the 45 minutes before school and the 30, 45 minutes after school. And those are pretty easy to nail down. And then the going to work and coming home from work stuff is pretty easy to nail down too. Some of that is just hard to do with the manpower we got right now, but we are moving toward it. And putting the speed car down there to gather data is always an option. We've got a lot of options and getting these, getting this information is always good to add to it. That, that's about all I can add to that.
Yeah, I know, it, it just kind of adding to that. I send you, I don't know, probably once a week, letters that I receive from people who are wanting. Areas checked because of speeding. So I know that it is a huge issue within our community, and I'm guessing probably we're not unique, but all right, thank you.
And just from an engineering.
Go ahead.
Just marrying the perspective. Speed bumps, they have their places, but on, on through streets like this. It's been my opinion over the years that I've been doing this, that they're just not a particularly good idea. Yes, they will slow traffic down for the people that are paying attention to what they're doing, for those that are speeding, because that's what they do. They're going to hit a speed bump and then you've got the possibility of losing control. So I, I, I'm, I, I am very reluctant to. To deploy those on, on normal streets. Chief Tucker said it better than I can. It's a behavioral thing. It's, it's more or less an enforcement issue. I would mention that on, on that same street, I have a request that David has had on his board for several months. To look at the possibility of adding another stop sign or two on that boulevard. I have the same basic concerns about doing that, because you generally just set. People up for then disobeying the law because they're going to run a stop sign. They don't think it's necessary. It's, it's human behavior and that's difficult to fix. The Councilmember Allen said it well. There's, there's a more pithy way of saying the same thing, but. Human behavior being what it is, it's difficult to put enough engineering in to prevent bad behavior. But that being said, you know, if I'm directed to look at that further, I will certainly do so.
Thank you. Councilman DeYoung.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I am hearing kind of a systemic issue about education. And as we talked about earlier about education being one of the three Es, along with enforcement and engineering. I would, it's not a solution to end this, but as a progressive step to maybe put something on the city scene, an article. Maybe put out some signs, child, children at play, that type of thing, and start a process of education. And I would proffer that for this discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman Kinser, I thought I saw your hand up as well.
There we go.
Yes, I would just like to say I have, you know, I've been public, I've been a witness to the traffic problem on, in that intersection and. Um, I'd just like to definitely ask Chief Tucker that it can be a priority for the speaker, the speed sign. In that area to just bring awareness to people. I think it would just remind them that, um, hey. Slow down, guys. This is a true speed limit here, not what you want it to be, right?
And we, we can certainly do that. And one thing, Mayor, just, and somebody mentioned earlier, kind of anecdotal. When we put, I put out something just the other day whenever I was out doing some traffic. And one of the, and about half of the comments were people were complaining about other cars going too slow. It was about a 50 draw as whether traffic is going too slow, and I heard a comedian say this once, and I, and then I'll shut up. People that are driving faster, you're maniacs, and people driving slower than you are idiots. And there is, there, that is a part of a component, but there are just a lot of people. I sat at Jamison and Township there, Carl. Not a lot of just blowing the stop sign, but a lot of stop and go, you know, the California stops rolling through the stop sign. That's, that's everywhere, and it, we're, we're going to address that when I get my, my little baby police officers crawling around bugging everybody. Then you're going to hopefully be getting some other complaints. Why are the cops stopping so many cars? And that's what's going to be happening.
Great, great, Chief Tucker. Thank you.
All right, so there are no more comments. I'm. All right, so um, there are no more comments. I'm gonna move on here so we can get on to our business. I have only a couple of things. First off, um. You heard Doug mentioned that we have been meeting with our legislatures and we do have one more. Um, the requests, of course, for funding have been submitted and um our meetings are nearly complete, but we have reached out um. Across our um district, we have a meeting set up with uh Liz Lovlett. And uh the reason for that is because she was very supportive when Mark and I went down to testify um last year. Regarding the undercrossing, the BNSF undercrossing, she really um instigated a great conversation that we believe led to the. The decision to provide them funding for us. So we're gonna be speaking with her um later on, well, next week. So. Um, also, I have been um in conversation with Senator Wagner. He's been really great about letting me know about bills that he. Uh, would like some support on. We do receive a hot sheet and the hot sheet talks about the different bills. Um, let me know. Um, council members, if you're interested in receiving that, I can shoot it out to you so that you can look up some of the bills that are being considered in the legislature. Um, just another comment about a reminder about council retreat. Council retreat will be in April and I'll be. Setting up those dates for you to consider um here within the next uh week or so. And be thinking about uh the subjects that you would like to talk. If there's anything in particular, please let me know so I can add it to the agenda that I am putting together. And um just kind of a uh kind of a PR here, um, letting everyone know that the Skagit Public Health. Uh, COVID nineteen test site will no longer be operating on Saturdays. Um, the change comes as the public health prepares to permanently close the test sites after March twelfth, and this is due to a lack. Of utilization on Saturdays. So there are um other testing sites available within the community and a full listing of those sites are listed at the Skagit County. Um, Health Department. So, um, other than that, we are moving on. Public comment. It is six fifty-one. I will open it up for public comment. Um, please, if there's anybody online who would like to speak, please uh state your name, your address and try to keep it to three minutes. So is there anyone for public comment? Okay, hearing none, I just want to remind uh the public that you can provide written questions or comments via email or you can send it by letter. And we will read them into the record. It is now six fifty-two and I am going to close public comment. Moving on to unfinished business, the first thing on the um agenda tonight is uh the emergency moratorium on modifications to the CBD. And Mr. Coleman, you are on.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Hello again, Council. So, um, since I put out this memo on last week to get to the council. A lot of new information has surfaced and discussions, so what I'm gonna uh be recommending is actually a little different than what you're seeing. Um, on the memo itself. So. At the last city council meeting, uh, council had requested, had brought up a concern about. The new garage doors on a on a building in the central business district. Um. And uh the the consensus was that was not a good thing. Uh, what we identified was the the design standards maybe didn't uh cover that issue and um. They did not get an application to do that modification. So uh. Quickly thinking, you know, we we threw out the idea of having a moritor- moratorium until. Uh, we could figure out uh what needed to be done. And make any adjustments to make sure that no other such changes happen to the buildings in the historic part of downtown. So since uh we put out the memo, I've done more research on the um the design standards and the requirements. For getting, for having a design review done and. What we've found is that our design standards would uh to a certain extent prevent what. Uh, was a a use like those garage doors. The applicant did not get a a design review application ahead of time. Um, so. That's that's a that's a different issue that we can sort out another time. Uh, but as far as the need to put a moratorium in to prevent something like this again. We've determined is not necessary. Uh, we believe that. If they had applied for design standards, we did would have had the ability to say that, no, they they couldn't do it that way that we would need to. They would need to do something different and. Uh, because of that, we're now recommending that we do not place a moratorium. On building permits and uh design review applications for the CBD. Because the design standards do uh prevent that necessity. So in lieu of having a design uh a moratorium, what, you know, what I'm proposing is for. As Councilmember DeYoung has pointed out, education um to. We think it would be uh go a long way if we could educate the downtown business owners of the necessity to uh. Submit an application for designer view for modifications. Um, and of course, review our standards and make sure that staff is aware. Of how the process is supposed to work to make sure that when they see something like this, that. Um, the the person that's making the modifications knows that they need to get a permit before they do work. So a project like this, you know, normally wouldn't require a building permit because it's a minor modification. So. The, you know, the a person might think, well, I don't I don't need a permit. I'm just replacing a door with a window or a window with a door or whatever. Something minor like that might be. But because we do have specific design standards for the central business district. People need to know that even if you want to make any modifications to the exterior of your building, you need to go through a designer reprocess, which is administrative. So. Uh, that's a, it's a process that is not as lengthy as like going to a design review board or anything like that. Uh, so if you have any questions. Um, now's a great time to to bring them up. Uh, but we we don't see a need for the. The moratorium. We do intend to bring the design standards to the planning commission. Uh, in in the very near future to have them review and make sure that. Uh, they're up to date and make sure that they meet the city's current vision for our downtown. A lot's changed since the uh planning commission and city council have last reviewed the downtown. Uh, design review standards. I think the last time that anything came up was a quick knee jerk. Change uh back in like two thousand and seven or eight. So I think it's very appropriate that uh the planning commission do does take a a look at the. Designer view standards and we review our processes. And in the meantime, we'll focus on education, education and. Education.
Alrighty, I definitely have comments.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Kinzer.
We have no reassurance following those um recommendations. That. Property owners within the central business di- district are going to abide. By the historical standards that we want to keep in place for our central business district. That provides nothing. If we don't put a moratorium on and revise the code to follow historical. Wishes for our town to follow. We risk a tremendous amount of loss. Of the historical character of our city and this just breaks my heart. It really does. Um, we didn't meet what the goal we wanted to meet a year or two ago to get historical designation for our town. We really, really, really have to keep moving forward to make that happen. And if that had happened. We would have had all of that, um. Code and everything set forth as a result of that, but we didn't get that. And so I really feel that the city has got to take every step they can. To preserve the character of the city in the CBD. We're gonna lose too much if we don't put into place a moratorium right now and revise that code. Period. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Councilman Kinzer. What have you invested in? What have you invested into the downtown? Uh, what do you know about the history of the downtown? There used to be like four or five shoe stores. There used to be. JCPenney's, there was a uh Safeway, Safeway Apartments. Three jewelry stores. I mean, I I don't know what the downtown is supposed to look like. I was there. And it's an ugly situation for business people to try to survive through. And if we want to just come through as government and beat them up, then let's do it. But I don't know what you're proposing.
Well, then you ask what my investment is. I've lived in the Upriver area since I was nineteen years old. I don't have the deep business connection that you do. But Cedar Woolley has always been my love, okay? That's my connection. That's my investment. I was a member of the Cedar Woolley Downtown Association. On the Board of Directors for two years and we tried to make it happen to get it um part of. The whole entire national designation as a business dis- business district. There wasn't enough interest to keep that downtown association going and so it failed. But still, there are people in this community, they have to keep the historical designation of this city alive. And I'm not willing to let that go. It has got to happen and that doesn't mean. That the entire facade and the entire central business district needs to change. We need to keep the appearance of a historical town with a hundred what? We've got a hundred and forty years of history behind us now and I have been studying that as a member on the board of the museum. We have got a tremendous amount of history that we need to keep alive, keep the central business. District going as a historical part of our community. I don't know. What more do we want? That's what we have to do.
Brenda, I I I appreciate your love for the community. I breathe. Blue and white uh for Cedar Woolly Cubs. Uh, you know, I've been around when we were doing the murals and all the. Oh, gosh, the brown sep- sepias and all that stuff. And it's worked great. It's been wonderful, but uh so many things have evaporated from us. And, you know, I mean, gosh, it's just, you know, I I want it to be the same. Nobody loves Cedar Woolly. I I've lived here for seventy years, okay? Uh, and grew up in a family that owned businesses here. And I can tell you about literally shoe store and everybody else in town, but anyway. Uh, I I know we need to maintain certain standards. And we did have a design and review committee about twenty-five years ago and maybe we need to reenact. That, okay? And and I love your love for Cedar Woolly because I share it with you, okay?
Great, Glenn, thank you.
Councilwoman Kestee.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just kind of wanted to weigh in here. Um, my recommendations for the uh moratorium. Was not to hinder businesses, but to preserve our historic buildings from permanent changes to them during a temporary situation. And I I'm listening to everybody and what's going on and I. I'm, am I hearing you correctly, John, that this would not have happened had they. Went through the proper channels and that you guys can in fact say. That this wouldn't happen again based off of what we already have.
That that's accurate. We think our design standards are such that we, you know, had. The application process gone through as it uh should have, we would have been able to work with a business owner to. Uh, not have the situation come up. Um, we try to be conscious of. The impacts of, you know, design standards on the local businesses and uh. But the, I think the message is clear that the council wants the the highest level of design standard. Enforced the from our our current standards. And so what we want to do is make sure. Uh, we think our current standards can do that, but we want to make them more specific. And improve them to make sure and uh that's that's what we're thinking we might be able to do for you.
Okay, because I'm good, I'm good with that, uh, knowing that, you know, this was an awful. Thing that happened and we can try and prevent this in the future and then also working towards the future. To have really strict guidelines for our historic buildings um without hindering the businesses. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilman McHoffin.
I thank you. Um, I just want to start by saying I really appreciate all the feedback on historic preservation. And I too, you know, see the significance and want to protect that. Uh, but I did talk to the owner of the business that were that brought all this about. And he was unable to join the meeting tonight. I asked him, you know, to do a public comment or to have his chance to explain. So I'd just like to speak on his behalf, you know, his point is he's been paying from his savings account for six months, you know, he's really struggling. Um, and the state, you know, regulations and the lockdown have been really difficult for him as well as for many other businesses. And his point was, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, make ends meet right now and this was just a. A means to help me operate within one of the phases that we're in. And I think that. You know, we have to listen to our businesses too because what good is a historic town if it's a ghost town? You know, I I really like the buildings too, but. I don't want to see them empty. And if we scare businesses away and we prevent them from making changes at a really unique time, you know. I could understand doing something like this if it was not during COVID and we didn't have all these restrictions from the state, but. You know, our businesses are already on the ground and are we gonna keep kicking them with, you know, more regulations and preventing them. From making necessary changes to stay open during one of these phases. Um, I just think that we should be really careful um. Doing a moratorium on changes when it might be the very thing that saves a business from, you know, closing permanently. And then we have no tenant in that historic building. Uh, so that's kind of my view. Um. Getting confirmation from John that, you know, had they have submitted this, it would not have gotten approved. I think going back to the education, that's really where our focus should be. Um, and we can, you know, modify our design standards moving forward. But it was a reassurance knowing that this would have been blocked if it had been submitted. So those are my two cents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Response to Brendan, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Kinzer.
Brendan, I really want you to know and I I hope you can reach out to the bullpen property owner manager that. This was never intended to bash them for what they did, okay? It just really opened our eyes to, wow, wow, this could happen all over our city and really damage. Our historical character. So this was not meant to be a personal attack on them by any means whatsoever. They they carried this through before before it even came to mind, you know, that wow. Um, this is something we really need to address. So I hope you can extend that 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 thought process. To them, please. And also, you know, if they had waited two more days, they probably wouldn't have even had to. Make that modification. That's really sad that there can be. A little more communication through all the the channels that, hey, if you just hold on a little bit more, we're gonna be there and. And be able to meet your goals. So, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I saw Councilman DeYoung, you have comment?
Yeah, um, yeah, a question for John. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, John, what is uh the standard in order to have a design review? At what point does someone in the uh central business district uh uh meet that in the flow chart of we have to do a design review?
Pretty much any modification to. Pretty much any modification to the exterior of a building.
So even putting paint on the building, like?
Even putting paint on the building, yeah. So we're, we're, we're already walking a, a kind of a, a, a thin line of having higher regulations for people to do little things like paint their buildings.
Or awnings, that type of thing?
And awnings, yes, we do, you know, we do regulate the awnings and, you know, we, we try to, we try to be as helpful as we can as people are trying to make uh, of changes to their building, improvements to their building. Uh, but obviously, you know, we, we want to keep the, the, the design standards in mind. And so the way we can be helpful is to uh, do it administratively. The uh, Councilmember Alan had mentioned that we used to have a design review committee. And so every time somebody wanted to do a sign on their business or to um, uh, paint their building, for example, they would uh, have to wait until the design review committee met, which is once a month. It was the planning commission back in those days. Um, so that, that was a long process and we heard a lot of frustration from that at the council level. And so the council changed that. I think it was in two thousand eight or nine. Um, and so we made that administrative as a, as a way to um, make it easier on the down, downtown business owners.
Okay, and so um, I, I, I want to get to a data point. I'm, I'm hearing. So when I hear historical, that to me means there's some sort of, or some sort um, someone has said this is a historical site. Uh, or is this more anecdotal that is being used like in, in promotional materials? Um, I, I'm just trying to figure out uh, what, what body has declared it uh, historical?
Um, there is no historical designation to the Central Business District or any part of the town. Um, uh, you, you can ask Councilmember Kinzer to uh, more about the historic designation that she was referring to. And then another historical, you know, concern is, you know, like the, the bullpen building, the, the, the building housing the bullpen is one of the oldest and more historic buildings in, in the town, you know, not all of them are that old or uh, that historic, but uh, some definitely have uh, more historic value to them than, you know, some of the ones built in the fifties and sixties.
Thank you very much.
Comment, please.
Brendan, you want to take that?
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Kinzer.
Okay, we have the Cedar Woolly Downtown Association on trying to declare the CBD as a historically designated site for three years. Unfortunately, the Cedar Woolly Downtown Association failed at that aspect. And I really, really, really hope someone will pick up the ball and carry that and make that happen. Because that is absolutely necessary to keep the historic character of our downtowns. CBD, there is no other way to make that happen. At this point, we have got to do this. And someone's going to have to pick up the ball and make that happen. We can't keep arguing that we have no historic designation. Yes, we do. It is there, bright and clear. We know where our historic buildings are. What is it going to do to make it happen to declare that area historic? I don't know. I kind of toss my hands up in the air at this point. What's it gonna take? People, help me out here.
I'll help you out, Brenda. We can get that done.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I understand, then Mr. Coleman, what you are recommending is that we not move forward with the moratorium. Is that correct?
Uh, based on, yeah, uh, based on the, the goal of, you know, will this moratorium, is a moratorium necessary to prevent another situation like those garage doors? It is not necessary to uh, have the, a moratorium in place. So, no, we, we recommend that it is not uh, passed.
Okay, thank you. So, having heard what Mr. Coleman has said, is there a motion to move forward with the moratorium? Or does council choose to let it go?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move forward with the moratorium.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kinzer. Is there a second? Okay, hearing no second, this uh, motion is uh, dead. So then we will move on to uh, number two on our unfinished business, and that is amendments to the CBD parking regulations.
That'll be me again. Well, in light of our past conversation, I think uh, the council should be pleased with this discussion. This is a second read on a proposed ordinance that would uh, make more uh, parking requirements for new development in the Central Business District. Uh, the council was concerned that uh, our current code allows for new development that has commercial on the, on the bottom within the Central Business District area to not have any parking requirement associated with that, with the residential units. So uh, the planning commission reviewed the parking requirements for the Central Business District and made recommendations uh, that the code be amended to put in standards for um, parking for residential units and associated in, in mixed use buildings in the Central Business District. Um, the amounts of parking are based on two tiers, whether that building is uh, over ten residential units or, and over four thousand square feet of commercial development. Or whether it's, falls under those thresholds. The buildings over those thresholds have a parking requirement. And the buildings with ten or fewer residential units um, would have no off-street parking required. Um, and that was based on um, uh, the, the thought that uh, small buildings such as uh, the building that burned down, that's a small lot. It's only uh, I think eight thousand square feet. Uh, almost half of that's uh, parcel would be taken up with parking if um, if parking was required for, on, on a lot like that. So the planning commission carefully reviewed and found that the smaller projects will not have a, an, a significant impact on the parking situation in the downtown, but larger developments, you know, if the, the old Ford dealer were to develop, then that they could get numerous units on there and that would definitely cause a parking problem. So they came up with a two-tiered system and uh, to require parking on those larger buildings. So this is for new development. It does not really affect um, existing buildings in the downtown. Um, so if there's any questions about it, I'm happy to, to field them now.
Any questions for Mr. Coleman?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Kinzer.
Um, John, one of the biggest pushes over the last couple of years is to get residential over commercial on existing buildings. That has been a really big topic. So why would we not consider requiring parking um, if those situations happen? Because we were really hoping for that over the last couple of years.
Yeah, um, so the, um, this primarily, this was primarily a project to review um, and for new development. There are a handful of buildings in the Central Business District that have the potential for residential above. Uh, for example, the, the most obvious one is the Gateway Building at the corner of uh, Ferry and Wood and Metcalf. I believe there's two, maybe three stories above, um, you know, the Mestiza. Mestiza is technically not in that part of the building, but it's that building. Um, there's two or three stories above that used to be apartments or a hotel. And there, there is definitely a potential for those to be converted to residential units. And the, the idea of uh, getting people in those buildings is actually very uh, that, that would be a good thing. We'd get more people downtown. Um, and we would get a use in the building now that's currently vacant. So it makes the building uh, you, you know, if there's people living in there, then there's better building maintenance. The building can be taken care of. That's also one that, you know, when people think of iconic buildings in the downtown, that's one of them. So it'd be great to get some life into that building. Now we get to some of the, some of the realities of the situation. This is a, if you've uh, for those that have been part of the Main Street programs, uh, getting people living in the upstairs of these, these older buildings is a problem everywhere in not just our state and not just our city. These buildings are old and in our area, we live in an earthquake area. So they don't have the uh, earthquake stability. Um, they don't have elevators. They don't have fire sprinklers. So anybody that wanted to uh, put uh, apartments in there have to address all of those issues. So sometimes that means uh, stabilization of the building for earthquake standards. Sometimes it means putting elevators depending on how they design it and how many units. Um, and usually it requires fire sprinklers. So all of those things start to add up and become cost prohibitive for a building owner to revitalize the upstairs building part. So it is uh, you know, one, it's one of those things that as the building and planning department, we would like to see people be able to invest in their buildings. But because of the, the costs, it um, it becomes very difficult for those building owners to do so. So what we try to do is um, give incentives for that. And one incentive is to not also put a parking requirement on top of all of these other requirements that they have to do. So that's one that, you know, if this, if the city council would like to, to review on the case that uh, if there is a serious concern that um, you know, the we give both uh, the, the quilt shop, for example, there's some space up there that could be converted to apartments, probably, I don't know, six units maybe. Would that, you know, would it be a, would it be a benefit to have people living in that building? Or is, or is the concern about parking a bigger concern? And uh, would we need to address that in specific code? Right now, we're trying to incentivize those handful of buildings that uh, are in the downtown that have the potential for residential above these existing buildings. Uh, incentivizing to be able to do so. And even at that, it's a stretch for somebody to make it pencil. But that was a long answer. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, John. And uh, above the fabric shop uh, that used to be the night of this institutional knowledge. Uh, it's a fire trap up there above uh, the old Oliver Hammer Safeway Apartments. My grandmother lived there for thirty years. I, I have some institutional knowledge. And uh, but okay, the deal is now they have businesses there. Where are the people supposed to park if they don't park on the city streets? That parking lot behind, I think, was funded by local merchants years ago, like forty years ago. And yeah, I mean, what are we supposed to do? Okay, that, that's all I'm asking you, John.
So that's another point is, you know, um, if somebody puts apartments in an existing building, there's, there's no parking on site. Uh, because those, those uh, downtown buildings take up their, the entire lot on which they sit. So you're asking them to, asking the building owner to then find a parking lot to put nearby, to, to put their residents' cars in, uh, is tricky. Um, you know, that means that they would have to buy another lot somewhere. And uh, so what we generally do is, you know, for those downtown buildings and the, and Councilman Alan, correct me if I'm wrong. We have the city-owned or city-managed parking spots, the one behind Woolly Market and the one next to the Masons that was purchased either by the city or by the Downtown Chamber Association and managed by the city. Um, so that's where, you know, business owners are, you know, the, the employees are intended to, to, to park and let the shoppers park on the street. So that is the system that we have in place right now to accommodate the people that work downtown. There's not a whole lot of residential in those buildings downtown. Uh, and again, the theory would be if they, if some of those existing buildings were converted to residential above the, the, those residents would be there during the day. They'd be at work and at night they'd be there, they'd be parking there and hopefully not parking, leaving cars around. But it hasn't been a problem so far. We haven't seen anybody convert any of those existing buildings in the downtown in the fifteen years that I've been working with the city. And occasionally we get the people that try and we, we do what we can to really help them make that happen, but nobody's been able to make it pencil yet.
Well, you kind of hit right on the head where you said, you know, I mean, it, it, they should park. Uh, all I know is all the business owners in the old days, if their employees parked on Main Street, they were fired. They parked in the city lot and left the the parking stalls open for customers on the Main Street. And I think that's what the council has to remember too, okay?
So uh, we are looking at the issue. It is, should the city adopt the planning commission's recommended amendments to the parking regulations for the new development in the Central Business District? If there is no more.
Um, comment, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Kinzer.
I remember two, three, four years ago, the vision of the city was to see residential places going above the commercial places in the downtown business district. And we were gonna, um, go through it, finding places for those folks to park that were in those new residential locations. And it really feels like we're not having that vision anymore. I'd like to get some feedback. Where do we stand on that?
Is there feedback for Councilwoman Kinzer?
I got a question. Yeah, I got a question. You know, the, the Central Business District and downtown are actually two separate subjects. The Central Business District is much larger than downtown. How are these ordinances going to differentiate between the two, two worlds they live in?
So on, on this ordinance, um, we, we have two separate areas. We have an area bound by the tracks to uh, over there by Eastern. And then the tracks again of, uh, to the north over near northern. And then to the, to the east by Puget Street. And then to the south by the alley between State Street and Warner. So that's an area that we've more or less defined as like the core Central Business District. And within that area, we have uh, a little bit looser standards than for the rest of the Central Business District, which has uh, under this new ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance has uh, slightly higher parking requirements than that core Central Business District. So thank you for pointing it, pointing that out. Um, this new ordinance does address the, the core downtown versus the rest of the Central Business District, which you're absolutely correct. Is much larger and goes all the way out to uh, Highway Nine along State Street and uh, east towards almost down to Handy Mart.
Thank you.
I, I have something to Brenda that could be added, Councilwoman Kestie.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I think that if we are going to be um, talking about having, you know, living spaces above- I I think that if we are going to be talking about having, you know, living spaces above our downtown buildings, quote unquote, historic, which I think are historic because they're the gems of our our city, they're over some a hundred years old, and they don't need a seal or a stamp in order to have it marked historic. They each have their own stor- story to tell. However, if we're going to put apartments in them where people want to do that, I do feel like it needs to be looked at. We have to have ample parking for those apartments. Otherwise, I would hate to see that happen. So, that's how I feel about the buildings in our historic downtown, that there needs to be proper parking if we're going to at least get that in there as well. Like he's addressed this for the new, new builds, there, it'd be nice to have something for the old builds too.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? If not, I am wondering, is someone wanting to make a motion?
What's your, what's your ordinance number?
It's ordinance one nine seven nine dash twenty-one.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance one nine seven one dash twenty-one.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman DeYoung, to recommend to the Planning Commission that that they work towards the planning regulations for the new development of the Central Business District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on then to the Cook Prospect pedestrian crossing. Mr. Freiberger, I believe this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the mayor had approached me several months ago to explore possibility of putting a pedestrian crossing on Cook Road that would service the in-construction playground facility located on Janiki Fields. And so, I initiated a discussion with the Skagit County Engineering Department or Public Works Department to that end, being that that section of Cook Road that fronts the Janiki Playfields is actually under county jurisdiction. We've looked at this, they they agree that that is a need in that vicinity, and that they should take the lead on that. And so, we have put together this interlocal agreement for your consideration tonight that will allow the county to move forward as the lead agency with the design and construction of the pedestrian crossing in the vicinity of the Prospect Street intersection. The exact location is subject to final design, but that appears to be the best location for doing that, utilizing the existing intersection at that location. What a pedestrian crossing in this vicinity would do is it would provide a means for safer crossing of the Cook Road in this vicinity for residents, especially children that may be seeking to get to the playground from the subdivisions that are to the north. We have the Prospect subdivision, which is in the county, and then we have the Klinger subdivision and other areas that are all easily within walking distance. And so, there's potentially a hundred and more children that would be in that vicinity that could use this crossing. The volume of traffic on that section of Cook is in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand vehicles a day now and growing fairly rapidly with the continuing development in the area. So, it's a pretty important configuration. The next available pedestrian crossing, and actually the only one in the vicinity, would be at the Cook Merle Roundabout, which is quite a distance to the east. And so, this is, this is a pretty important project. The agreement assumes that the county would, would, as I said, act as a lead on the project. They haven't decided yet whether to design this in-house or to seek a consultant to do that. We have, I've given a memo, addressed the potential costs for that. The way the agreement is stated is if if the county does that with their own forces, the cost would be borne by the county. If they do consult it out, then we would split the cost for the design phase, fifty-fifty with the county and the same with the construction phase. We're also assuming that the county, working with the city, will seek grant funding for the actual construction phase. You have the estimate, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the complete project there, and I've given a breakdown in the fiscal impact part of the memorandum there. The total cost to the city is under twenty thousand dollars, assuming that we would fund fifty percent of a match for the construction phase, and we would fund potentially fifty percent of a consultant agreement or consultant to do the design phase. So, this is, this is the purpose for this particular agreement. We think it's a pretty good partnership between the city and the county. We've identified funds within our existing twenty twenty-one budget from our from our existing funds that we've set aside for arterial projects to cover the cost of the design phase for this. Wouldn't anticipate the construction phase would hap- would not happen until twenty twenty-two. So, we'd just look, be looking at the design phase in twenty twenty-one. So, that is the proposal for the council tonight to approve this interlocal agreement to allow the city and the county to partner to put a pedestrian crossing in place at Cook and Prospect. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. That was really well stated. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger?
Yeah, I've got a question. What is? What is the the big cost in the, in the pedestrian? I don't understand how crosswalks so expensive. What what goes into that?
Well, this particular one is envisioning actually a signalized crosswalk similar to the Hawk signal that we have between Reed and Puget on Highway Twenty. Because of the volume of traffic, which is not that much less than what we have on Highway Twenty, we think that a signal is is a key element to this. Just painting a crosswalk, we did, we did look at and we talked about doing it one similar to what we did on Fruitdale with the pedestrian actuated LEDs. We don't think that would be visible enough with the three-lane configuration of the roadway there and with the volume of the traffic. So, this would be a more aggressive Hawk-type signal. There are some other tapes out there that they'll look at as well, but that's that's probably the preferred one.
So, the cost is actually the signal and the, and the, and the cost, crosswalk's no big deal. It's the cost of the signal.
Correct, yeah. If it was just a crosswalk, either either the county or the city could do that part of the work without any real issues. It's just a matter of traffic control and some thermoplastic for the markings and the signs.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Uh, Councilman DeYoung.
Hi, thank you. Needed is a crosswalk there, and to be clear, there's no great separation. This is a lot of flash, a lot of flashing indicators for for drivers and a sense of safety for the users of the crosswalk. Is that correct, Mark?
That is correct. It is a pedestrian actuated flashing signal intersection.
Great. And then just to add to the, to the mix of the numbers, is it correct, in my understanding, that's on the Cook side of Durban Village of the R fifteen plan there?
Oh, boy, John, John could probably speak to that. John, is that east or west of that planned development?
So, the, the, the crosswalk at, the crosswalk at Janiki Fields you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Would be, that would be west of the R fifteen zone. And the the UVMU, Urban Village, is south of Janiki Fields. So, the the Hawk signal wouldn't really necessarily be that close to the UVMU.
Okay, thank you for that special relationship for me. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
I'd just like to thank Mark for putting this together. I really support this idea. Having lived in Klinger previously, I know there's a lot of kids that love to go out and play, and this would be a really big attraction. So, having this crosswalk would be a big public safety. It was, I think it's much needed, and I really appreciate the effort going into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman McGoffin. Anyone else? Okay, this is a first read, new business. Is we will bring this back unless there is a motion. Somebody would like to make a motion. Okay, hearing none?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Johnson to execute the attached interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Sejowoli and Skagit County to collaboratively design and construct the Cook Road pedestrian crossing.
Madam Mayor, I'm second.
Okay, so I have.
Everybody.
Yeah, I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Kesty. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Great, thank you, everyone. This passes. This is fantastic, and I want to reiterate what Mr. McGoffin said because I think it is so true. This is all about safety, and you can't put a dollar sign on a child's life, that's for sure. So, thank you, everyone, for doing that. So, we are coming to the close of the evening. I do have one matter that I want to bring forth for the good of the order. I have received a call today from Mayor Sexton. He was inquiring about our funding from the the special house bill that we went ahead and gosh, what did we do? We adopted it and back in July, it was House Bill fourteen oh six. He is wondering if the council would be interested in taking some of that funds or all of that funds and putting it towards the shelter that they are putting together. I am going to be sending out information to you. I did request from him that he send out some drawings and some information. He did, and so I'm going to forward that to you, and would like you to think about that. We're going to do the research on our own end to see what we can do as far as if if we have the means to do that, take that money and do that. So, I will, we'll be bringing that back to you later, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, just a quick question. Yeah, did, where did Burlington settle on their policy with fourteen oh eight?
They chose to do the same as us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome. I believe he said that what they're looking to do is forty-five different units. It's a, it's a quite a large piece of property off of Peace Road, forty-five units. This will be for, it'll, it'll be housing for those who are homeless. And yeah, I've got the information here, and I will forward that. And please, I encourage you to look at that and give it a lot of thought, okay? A lot of consideration. Anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, I really would appreciate you forwarding that info. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will also, just because I put it out there, I will also send out the hot sheet to you, so you guys can take a look at that if you're interested. All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Great interaction and and discussion tonight. I hope you all have a great evening, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.